All right, we'll call the work session of March 11th to order. We have two items on the agenda. First one is Zero Wentworth House Road for site plan review. Hello, John.
Hello.
Let's see.
So I got a handout. Nothing major.
All right, John Jagman from Haley Ward with me today is Kevin Smart from the Gundalo Company. And we're here to talk about this proposed maintenance facility that they would like to build on Wentworth House Road. Thanks for being here to talk in general terms at this work session. Got the typical cover sheet and existing conditions plan. There's a bunch of trees on the existing conditions plan. A bunch of small trees that have sprouted up. They're mostly small diameter that we'll need to take out. And about halfway through the lot is the 250-foot shoreline protection boundary line. So the project will need shoreline permitting. There's a existing wood frame building in poor condition that will be removed. So there's some notes here about that demolition. And then the rest of the property is a lot of gravel. There's a wetland to the east side, a small isolated wetland on the east side. And there are some wetlands to the west of the lot. But I was told that we need to relook at them in the spring. There was predominant vegetation there. But it was due to a leak of some sort. And since that leak was fixed, the wetlands have disappeared. So we're going to be looking at those again in the spring. Next page is the site plan. So the proposal is to put a 30 by 45. Single story with a mezzanine structure that would be used for maintenance. And it would be maintenance of the Gundalo and other associated boats. Access would be over adjacent property in ownership of the property owner of this. But there would be obviously an easement that we would provide. We're providing five parking spaces. The handicap and handicap lay down are concrete. But the rest is just still gravel. We're reclaiming a lot of the area of gravel to return to Loeman seat. On the backside of the building is a concrete pad which would have an awning on top of it. And then there are some kayak storage racks. That pretty much is the site plan. Loeman seating in the front. The parking calculations are the second story office space, which is 360 square feet, requires two spaces. And in the workshop, there'd be three employees or three people working. So that gives us a total of five. And we have five parking spaces. The next sheet is a rating and utility plan. And the, what I handed out was some updates to the utilities. The Department of Public Works shared some additional information. So the... On the upper left, there is apparently an eight-inch water that comes across. And I believe that was put in place to provide for future development on this side. So hopefully, we can tap that as it's off the pavement on the south side, on this side, to feed the water to this proposed building. There is a stub for the E1 forced main sewer connection. And that stub location lined up with where we had received some information from the contractor. So we show that. A little adjustment there on this updated sheet. There will be a propane tank, electrical service coming off of a pole, and water service and the E1 pump into the sewer system. And those are the utilities. The usual detail sheet with the E1 IHO 91 in building proposed sewer pump connection. Is any questions? No, I'm here to give feedback.
What's the regulation about cutting those trees in the shoreline zone?
So there's zero to 50 feet in the shoreline zone. You have to maintain 25 points in every 25 foot by 50 foot grid segment. So we're not in that part. Between 50 and 150, you have to maintain 25% of the undisturbed area.
Okay.
And we're not in that either. So...
So in the area that you're in, what are the regulations?
None for cutting trees.
For cutting trees. There must be regulations, otherwise it would stop at 150.
Yep. So in the part of the site that we're in, we have to file a shoreline, a shoreline permit. And the sheet, seat two, if you go back to that, Peter, it has two tables. Impervious surface in the 250-foot shoreline on the top, and then impervious to the property line. So in the shoreline protection zone, you have to report the impervious surface. If you are over 20% impervious on your lot in the shoreline zone, and you're creating more than 20% impervious, you have to provide advanced stormwater treatment. In this case, though, we're decreasing the impervious surface. So we don't have to provide the treatment. We just have to submit for the application and show the numbers.
The handicap spot has to be paved, right? It's required?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And the unloading area?
And the unloading area. Yep. And the concrete, we have, that's concrete. And then there's a sidewalk. That's all concrete.
Yeah.
And then the ramp.
So I'm just kind of generally curious why you put the parking spaces the way you did, with the drive aisle being so narrow.
The...
Why didn't you do angle parking more toward the back?
Well, angle parking works, but you have to be able to drive out. So perpendicular allows you to back up and then go out.
Yeah, but there's not enough room to back out.
Well...
So did you look at maybe keeping the handicap parking space on that side? Because there's plenty of room to maneuver because of the unloading area. And then having the other parking spaces in the back.
The other thing we might do once we reassess the wetlands is make the driveway wider.
Yep. Second thing is where you're showing that propane tank is probably the worst possible spot you could put it. Because that's right where it's going to get plowed into.
Okay. Yep. We can move that over to... Probably just push it 20 or so feet to the east.
Yeah, kind of like behind the building where that would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's got to be 10 feet from the building.
Yeah, it's a minimum distance, but there's plenty of room.
Would that be 10 feet from a canopy too, you think, or just the enclosed building? Probably the enclosed building because it's a gas.
You're going to keep it above ground?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah, so I mean, I think probably the safest place would be over by the wood line.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about servicing it. But yeah, it would be probably safer the further it is over.
Very good ballards, you know, vehicle protection, you can figure out a way.
So is that eight-inch line dry right now?
I don't think that eight-inch line actually exists. I know it was on the Sagamore survey originally, but it's not something that we...
Encountered when you were putting the sewer in?
Yeah, it was not.
So it may not be there.
So it may not be there. That may be incorrect.
So the...
It's not on our GIS. I don't know if the surveyor had picked up something that they, that they traced or not. But it's not something I believe to actually be there, the eight-inch crossing, unfortunately.
The plan that you sent me?
That was for the sewer alignment directly in front of the property. That was what got installed as part of the Sagamore sewer project. There was not water work as part of the project in that area.
Okay. I understood it to be an as-built.
That is the as-built for the sewer.
Yes.
Yes.
And on that drawing, it just says eight-inch water pipe.
Yeah, that was from the survey.
Original survey.
From the original survey that did not get erased. I said it was a draft as-built. We hadn't completely gone over it. But the sewer main was the correct information on that area.
Okay. Tom Reese is not here. He swore that you brought him a water pipe across the street, but we'll work on that.
And then the E1 sewer's pub has to be an outside station.
We did the outside ones as part of the project, but I'm not, I'm not sure we've had the discussion of stopping the, any...
Is this building going to have a basement?
No, it's a slab.
There you go.
Okay. So that's not allowed with a slab, or that's okay with a slab?
They don't make one that's designed to go in a slab underneath the finished floor.
Well, they could put in a cutout. They could do a section of, put it in a...
Is there a reason why you don't want to put it outside?
Yeah, the property owner believes that it would be a lot more excavation of ledge out there in the front. If you're going to excavate for the building anyway, he thought it would be good to put it in the building.
I'm not buying that, but, okay. You'll have to explore that a little bit.
Yep.
We would much prefer it outside.
Okay. I guess the, see, the outside version is seven feet deep.
Yeah.
And the inside version is a lot shallower, so that's why.
Is this going to be a seasonal building?
We'd like to see it year-round.
Okay, so you're going to heat it 24/7 all the time?
No, probably heat as needed.
So it should be outside. What are these other two rectangles shown behind the concrete pad?
Kayak storage?
Okay.
I think they're labeled on the site plan.
Okay. They're labeled on them.
Yeah.
Kayak storage racks? Is that what those are?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Will the repair work inside include working on motors though? On motor engine?
No, not necessarily, no. Mostly wood. Yeah, the small boats.
Can you just bring the mic closer because in case people are watching or watch it later?
Yeah, mostly small boat maintenance. We have two whalers, couple of rowing hulls like Dory's. Got a bunch of little sailboats, probably four of those. Then all the kayaks and stuff. Stuff's always coming in that we have to turn away because we can't take it. But the general population of the boats is for the camp, the campers. And it's associated with the Gundalo Company, Gundalo Camp. And they teach them how to sail, how to row, teach them how to repair things, how to paint, how to fix, things like that.
So you have a pretty good air exchange system there. Are you doing fiberglassing and painting and...
Yeah, we'd probably put a fan in, yeah, part exhaust fan.
Do something out.
Yeah, definitely, because it's not commercial scale at all. It's just a little patch and repair in there. Pardon me?
It's a workshop.
It's a little workshop, yeah.
Yeah. Now, you need to, they need to do something when they submit their building permit plans in that regard.
Yeah. Something to be thinking about, though.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Yep.
John, were you considering this use, repair of commercial marine craft and marine-related structures?
So in the cover letter, I talked about a special exception requirement.
Yeah, that's what that would require.
Yeah. Yeah, so what should I, in specific, you said?
Well, yeah, use 1230 as repair of commercial marine craft and marine-related structures. That kind of sounds like what it would fit under.
And it is, I believe, in the waterfront business.
It is in waterfront business.
It's in the waterfront business zone, yes.
Yeah, that's not an allowed use of...
It's a special exception.
Special exception.
It's a special exception because it could involve a lot of hazardous materials, probably, I guess.
Maybe. Yeah, that's what they're thinking, I think.
So that would probably be our next stop is the zoning board.
And so with that, there are a couple reference sections that have setbacks from residential districts that might require relief. And then the parking requirement is a parking demand analysis for the use.
Okay.
Yeah, 58, 10.581 is a lot area requirement, and 10.592 is a setback requirement.
581 or 51?
Here, I'll give you this. Where turns a setback?
592.
Okay, I don't have, I just have the 581, even that, pass it. For the reference from that table, it's a two-acre requirement. So it'd be another variance, basically, for the size.
Okay.
Okay, do we all start with the finished floor elevation?
For floodplain, oh, that's a good point.
What is the finished floor elevation?
So it'll be a non-residential structure, but there weren't any elevations on this, I don't think.
11.3 is on this plan.
I'm reading that right.
11.5 is the floor.
It would be very tiny.
Yes.
10 would be the requirement. You're good?
The parcel itself is in Zone X. But are you saying it's adjacent to?
The adjacent floodplain, the two-foot, two-foot, three-foot requirement. But if you're at 11, you're okay. 10 is, 10 would be the threshold.
Size.
Probably not up Sagamore Creek, but...
I think the whole city's...
Eight? The whole city's eight?
The whole city's eight for title. Yeah. So we can check that.
It's going to be above it, though.
It'll be above it, yep. But the wetland, you said you're going to wait. I see wetland flags on sheet C2.
Yep.
Is that, that's edge of the stream? Because there's a stream that goes through there.
Yes.
And I don't know how you're going to, I mean...
Significant.
It's going to be a pretty big buffer on your, on your project. I think that's where those wetland flags are. Are they along the edge of the stream or the, I don't know which side. Either way, there's a stream. When you look at the area...
That comes under the street?
It does. It goes under the, comes from up in that conservation land in the back. Comes all the way from basically rye, weaves its way through the back, and then comes out under, under the street, yeah. So I think that buffer is going to extend pretty far into your site.
The really big one that was flooded.
Yeah, the wetlands were 2020, so that's why I said we got to update them.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. One acre.
And you don't have any plans to combine those lots? They're just two separate lots? You're keeping it that way?
I don't, I don't have any plan. The owner didn't send any plan.
Oh, yeah, there it is. You can see the stream on that one.
Right.
Is there a setback issue?
Yeah, he's, there's setback issues.
You gave him the setback?
Yeah.
John, the proposed awning, it sounded like a, a structure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would, that would have to be setbacks. It would count towards building coverage, open space.
Yeah, we need a variance for building setback.
Yeah. If you look... The setback here, the 41 feet there, goes past the awning to the structure. But it really should go to the, the awning.
Oh, in the back.
Unless it's not a structure.
I think under zoning, it'd be, we count towards building coverage setbacks.
Because it's permanent?
What was that?
Because it's permanent?
Because it's more than 18 inches tall.
Does it?
Yeah.
And it extends out beyond the house too, more than, was it a foot and a half?
I think it's like, yeah, two feet, 30 inches.
This isn't really necessarily pertinent to this application, but maybe curiosity. How are you going to get the Gundalo onto the site?
The Gundalo won't be going onto the site.
Just for boats, okay.
This is for the small boats.
Oh, okay.
This is for the little stuff.
Like, how am I going to get that big?
I mean, we may take a piece of the Gundalo to the workshop and try to repair it and bring it back. But no, the Gundalo stays where it is.
That makes sense. It's a big trailer.
I don't think the city would handle it.
All right, any other comments or questions from... Oh.
Just note that Route 1B, it's a state highway. We would need to check with the state DOT on whether or not you're going to need a driveway permit. Change your use.
And my comment's kind of similar to that, with this being DOT, um, if you do need to excavate across the road for the water service, it would be at their, restoration would be at their discretion.
Yeah?
Yeah? All right?
All right.
Yeah?
Last call, all right, thanks. Next up, we have nine oh nine Islington Street, looking at a parking conditional use permit.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Great, hey, how's it going?
Okay, Kada? All right, afternoon, John Shagman, Haley Ward, Megan Bowlin from Chinburg Builders. And they're working on the, um, uh, upgrade of the nine oh nine building to include the Louis Restaurant, which has gone through a couple of approval processes so far. It was identified that the, um, they might need a parking conditional use permit. So I filed for the workshop because we can't go to planning board till we come to TAC. And then, um, we worked diligently to, because this requirement came up late in their process, but we worked out and worked some things that we sent, um, earlier this week regarding the parking demand memo. So Eric, I know is, is on the, in the meeting and he's had a chance to, to look at it briefly. When we did that, we prepared a spreadsheet, I don't know if you can bring that up. It would be not from the.
Right, I don't have.
I did put it, I, I uploaded it to the online portal.
Viewpoint?
Yeah, it's in viewpoint. But we did a spreadsheet of uses and basically we have nine oh nine Islington Street. And the applicant also owns nine fifty-nine Islington Street, so they're gonna go forward with this as a joint, uh, parking with the both of the properties. There's, um, a number of uses at nine oh nine, radio station, uh, there's some vacancies, there's a upcoming, I don't know if it's been filed yet, for the medical aesthetics thing, there's a painter, Ross Engineering, uh, a salon, Loaded Question Brewery, Dowza Automotive, and this proposed restaurant would be going in there. And then at nine fifty-nine Islington, there's the West End Theater, Photography Studio, and Architect's Office. So each of those has the Portsmouth Parking Demand, which, um, is based on the zoning ordinance. And has, we've listed the square foot of the use, the code that we found, the, the corresponding, closest parking calculation to the use, then the requirement, and most of them are per thousand square feet of gross floor or per gross floor area. And then that number of spaces that would be required, so, um, if you want to point to that column to the left one, oop. This, this, I'm in this column now, which is the Portsmouth Parking Demand and the number of spaces. And then we also did the I T E Parking Demand, and Eric did point out that we're on the fifth addition and we need to upgrade to the sixth, which we did today, but we haven't received the key to unlock it. But, um, hopefully those haven't changed in the addition a whole lot, but those have some varying requirements. We're listing the code number of the use, and that information is attached. You've got the Portsmouth code and the I T E code, and we've attached those in the submission. And the number of spaces that are required under those codes, so they're pretty close. And the bottom is the total, there's a hundred and forty-five required for Portsmouth, under the Portsmouth ordinance, and a hundred and thirty-nine, uh, showing up as being required in the I T E. Then we did some more columns that are titled occupancy rates, Portsmouth and occupancy rates, I T E. So under the Portsmouth Shared Parking Occupancy Rates, which is the table down there at the bottom, there's daytime and evening variations in the parking demand. So you take the parking that is required and you can apply daytime and evening based on the Portsmouth ordinance occupancy rates percentages. So the daytime use figure and the evening figures are separated out. And so, for example, the restaurant is seventy percent daytime and a hundred percent evening. So when you look at the Louis Restaurant, at the bottom of the nine oh nine, Suite fifteen, it's thirty spaces, or thirty-one from Portsmouth Parking Demand and thirty-two I T E. And then seventy percent is the twenty-two thirty-one and the twenty-two thirty-two. So we have the two daytime and evening rates based on the application of the table. We applied the same table to both, and the results are that the highest required parking is the daytime Portsmouth occupancy, which is a hundred and fourteen spaces required. Coincidentally, the site has a hundred and fourteen spaces, so, and we didn't work backwards from the answer, it just came out that way. So theoretically, we would not need to go to the planning board for a conditional use permit. We also supplied additional information that Chinburg has gotten from the tenants in regard to their operating hours. And it goes in concert with what the city table has, as far as the percentages of, uh, parking need daytime, evening. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm sure it actually makes sense, but seems like a use like Louis would have a hundred percent occupancy at night.
It does, so the evening is thirty-one and thirty-two, which correspond to the thirty-one Portsmouth required and thirty-two I T E required.
I got you.
So also has, under the table, um, seventy percent daytime. Because that daytime figure goes to five PM, so there's some overlap there, you know, I think Louis is only gonna be opening for dinner, but they may open at four thirty or something like that, so that's why the overlap.
So where are the Portsmouth occupancy rates lower than the I T E?
Uh, let's see, so the I T E are, um, differently, the, the, the parking is per. The restaurant is. Two point five six, and it's, so Portsmouth doesn't have a radio, uh, I T E doesn't have a radio station, so we used Portsmouth's. Vacant space, one per three fifty.
It looks like a zero.
So two point five six is, is pretty close to, yeah, maybe that's two point seven, two point eight oh or something. The clinician there is four per thousand, and it's three point eight nine. The painter is a trade, trade shop, it's, it's two point five, and it's one point seven six with I T E. Engineering office is, um, pretty close again. We didn't have a salon for I T E. Brewery was based on hundred, per hundred square feet, pretty darn close, twenty-three and twenty-two. The auto repair, there was a lot less with I T E. So it's.
They usually have ten cars on the parking lot, aren't they? They keep cars, people bring their cars and they stay out in the lot.
Right, so if they, if under the Portsmouth, there's thirteen, then, then that's somewhat accounted for because people are dropping off and picking up as the day goes by.
And they have lease requirements that limit them from keeping that many, um, cars in the lot, so.
And then the West End Theater is, um, forty-seven seats, and that would definitely not be at peak use of the offices and whatnot. So they're pretty close, Peter, I know.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Did I explain it?
Yep, just trying to wrap my head around it.
So the vacant spaces, you're just assigning three hundred and fifty per square foot?
Yeah.
Just assuming it'll be like office or?
Yeah, it's, um, five ten to five thirty in Portsmouth?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's. Office.
Professional Business and Financial Services. I don't know, retail is a little bit, one per three hundred for retail, but I don't think you have any retail tenants out there, right?
No.
What other inquiries do you get typically?
Sort of like studios, like photography studio space, I don't work on the leasing side, so it's just kind of hearsay what I hear, but.
Yep. Sorry for John's.
No, that's okay, I haven't heard of any prospective tenants in those spaces, I don't think it will be like retail or, um, I don't know.
So they'd obviously have to come back if it was a more intensive use, you know, in the aggregate.
So to have parking, shared parking on separate lots in the same ownership, that's a special exception. If, if you meet the parking requirement. If you don't meet the parking requirement, you can do a CP for shared on separate lots. Or you could merge the lots and then, um, you'd have all the parking on one lot.
It's a special exception even if the site is within a certain distance?
Within three hundred feet.
Then you have to get a special exception?
Yeah.
Could they?
They could merge the lots and then it would all be on one lot?
Yeah, I don't know if that's in the cards, but, um, as far as the, um. Yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
What's the criteria there? Is it another thing where there's certain?
For a special exception?
Shared parking, special exception?
Just the special exception criteria.
Could they get conditional use for that?
Well, say if they were deficient, they could get a conditional use permit to have shared parking on separate lots.
Which wouldn't require, that would be planning board?
That'd be planning board, and you'd have to have a covenant, a recorded covenant, and then, you know, shared parking methodology that, is it that you, a used, that's in the ordinance?
Correct.
But that's if you're deficient.
Correct. I don't know, we need Eric to chime in at some point.
Right, or if you merge the lots, then.
If you merge the lots, that takes, that, that's probably the easiest route.
Uh huh.
Sounds like.
Yep. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, John, if you saw the comments I got to you earlier today, it, it looks pretty good, you know, once you updated with the sixth edition. And then the other hot item was the occupancy rates, the I T E has their own rates, which might be slightly different than Portsmouth's occupancy rates. You should be using the I T E rates on the I T E data and Portsmouth rates on the Portsmouth data when you do your comparison there in those last four columns.
So, as you know, the I T E has, um, hourly breakdowns.
No.
But in the new version, do they do it for everyone?
I don't know.
I think so.
Apply it where, where it's possible, you know, use it. If you don't, if I T E doesn't have it, then you can use it in Portsmouth.
Right, so the example, uh, the trade contractor, um, yeah, we can, we can do it that way, well, ones that do have a breakdown by I T E will find the peak percentage between eight and five, and then likewise, six to midnight. And the ones that don't will use the Portsmouth assignment.
Yeah.
But the I T E, uh, rates, okay, yeah, that's, it might be closer to the one fourteen, but right now it's at one oh eight, so.
Yeah, because in those sheets farther down, you supply, you can see some of the I T E uses have temporal distribution during, through the day. If they do have that, then, then use it.
Yep, I got you.
I think the, uh, the process you're using is correct one to compare it, each, I just go like that, just as long as the assumption, you know, the planning department's okay with the assumption of the vacant spaces, then I'm okay with it.
Is that, I guess I didn't look closely enough at it, but are the, is the parking layout gonna change at all? Do you have the right lane widths and parking space size and all that?
So the only change, and there's a plan that went in with the original. No, actually, that.
This plan?
Is it on here?
Yeah, there was a plan that went in with the update, or should have gone in with the update. That's the way it is now.
That's the way it is now.
It's a, it's a hundred and fifteen, but I guess I didn't attach it, sorry. Louis Restaurant is gonna take one space.
With their outdoor dining?
Yeah, so it'll be down to a hundred and fourteen.
And that needs a conditional use permit, right, the outdoor dining?
Yeah.
Louis needs a conditional use permit.
For what, for outdoor dining?
Dining in that zone.
Yeah.
It's allowed in certain zones in the downtown, but it's not, I mean, it's okay, it's on private property, but it still needs conditional use for the outdoor side.
Um, it came up briefly at the previous meeting at the Board of Adjustment meeting. And the architect was there and he, we were just gonna circle back and talk about a final plan there, so.
But that, but that outdoor dining space would take away one's parking space?
Yeah, bringing it to one fourteen.
One fourteen, okay. John, just looking at this plan, I don't think there's enough handicap parking spaces out there either.
Yeah, the Louis plan, if you go up to it, um, is addressing some of that?
This is not, this is what was in the.
Yeah, okay. Go up to the Louis plan, which is further in, further up, yeah, oop, I didn't include it. Louis had a site plan showing some additional handicap, um, space. You've got the two up there, and then one up there.
Yep.
One over there, and then the.
Those two are illegal because there's no alimony area.
The Louis.
The access to the house, yeah.
Yep.
Say that again?
The access to the house, so they're, that's illegal.
The one up in the corner?
The two together there?
Two together, two together, got you, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And there'll be one right by the new outdoor dining slash entrance. So that 10, the one in the top left will become a handicap. So we'd probably have to find the fifth one.
Yep. And spots for loading areas. They have to be the closest to the doors. If there are multiple, if there are multiple doors, they have to have the right spaces at the right spots.
But other than outdoor dining and the parking space shifting, there's no site changes to the buildings or anything like that?
Correct.
You guys aren't going to have like a dumpster enclosure?
And you're going to need to add a grease trap outside. They have a grease trap.
That plan's been submitted.
William Vernon's working on it with them.
What about the dumpster? Is there going to be a dumpster?
I need to look into that.
Are you guys going to add any signs to the site for Louis?
Yeah, they'll have restaurant signage.
Okay. Out on Islington?
We haven't discussed that.
There's signage out by Ampet or it's not Ampet anymore, but it'll be something else soon, but that sign had gotten variances a number of times.
Is it sort of the pole sign that's out there at Islington?
At least so, yeah.
Yeah.
Goalpost sign.
Yeah. So I think that sign's existing, not conforming for, I think, several reasons. So just be aware that if you try to expand the non-conforming, you might run into some issues with that.
Right. But it's there by variance and they can change out a tenant.
Right. Yeah, that'd be fine.
As long as it stays the same size.
Right.
If you're adding on to it, it might become an issue.
Right. No, they need to get another variance or update to the variance.
Sweet.
It's a good looking sign.
What's that?
It's a good looking sign.
It might need a paint job, but you know, it's kind of neat.
It's different.
I guess.
Yeah. I don't know what the signs on there.
Old school. Hang your shingle outside.
What's that?
It's old school. Hang your shingle outside.
Yeah. Yeah. That's an old picture, isn't it? No, maybe not.
Any more questions? So maybe it'd be good to share your revised plan with Public Works and Planning, just for the final layout.
Yeah, I was thinking about it. The 114 is also on the other side, so there'll be some handicap over there.
Remember the doors are loaded.
Loaded questions?
Get to figure out where the uses are, the loaded question part of this?
Need the handicap spaces the most and put the handicap spaces.
Loaded question does have a couple, right? Those two?
Yeah, those two over there. So those already exist. And is that? Then there's a ramp to, it's just a corner that you can't park in.
Just can't get to it.
Yeah, because it's square up, you know?
Yep.
And there's a ramp there, yeah, there for loaded brewery.
Is there a handicap spot?
You know?
Maybe.
Are people meant to enter or leave through the same spot or they kind of go through it?
The driveway?
I know what you're saying. When they're in the vehicles?
So you have that, you have that sort of panhandle, the driveway? Are they meant to come in and out through that driveway?
That's wide enough for two-way traffic, yeah. And then there's a lot, if you do the tax lot thing in blue there for a second, it, the lot has a panhandle that goes out to the shared driveway that's 1,001. And others...
Is there like an easement there?
Yeah. There's a ton of easements in that corridor.
Okay.
Water sewer, access.
And is that a two-way entrance exit as well?
Yes.
At that far end, the southern end, left end?
Yep.
And what about the one in the middle? Who uses that? It's not, you guys don't have an easement to that?
One in the middle. You can drive through it, but it's not easemented, I don't think.
Is it not a driveway?
Oh, it's a driveway.
It's a paved.
Yeah, I know it's a driveway, but is it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's paved between the Quonset Hut building and the Portsmouth copy. It's all pavement. People can drive through. So I would say it's informal. Not aware there's easements there, but... There's no easements there? I'm not going to say that, Vincent. I'm going to say, I'm not aware. I'm going to have to do some lead research to get your correct answer. But it's certainly not blocked off at the moment, okay?
So, yeah, you could talk to Eric, I mean, see about if you merge, merge these two, then you might...
But we still got to go get a special exception, so...
Well, not if you merge them.
We still need a special exception for the outdoor dining, so...
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit.
Yep.
You said special exception earlier. Why did I write that down? You said conditional use permit.
I said conditional use permit.
Why did I write special exception? I must be losing my mind.
I said when we got the special exception.
They got the special exception for the use, for Louis'.
When you were doing, sorry, sorry. So the outdoor dining is a conditional use permit?
Yep, right.
For that zone.
For that zone, okay.
Yeah, some zones it's allowed by right.
So they would still need to go...
Planning board.
The planning board.
Right.
So...
Straight to planning board. I don't think we even have to...
The merging of the lots is not as shortcut to get them...
The parking.
Permit. It's up?
It makes the parking easier.
Think so?
Well, you don't have to...
You would have to get a special exception.
Unless you want to go to the VOA.
Yeah, you still got to have a land use attorney though to, to merge, right?
Yeah, I mean, you...
To merge a lot?
Yeah. You need a conditional use permit for outdoor dining. So maybe we need a conditional use permit for the parking too and then not merge them and do a conditional use permit.
Right, and just use, just use the one lot?
And...
Because, because the conditional use...
Shared parking.
Right.
Right?
So that's, the planning board made grant it to allow a reduction in the number of off-street parking spaces for shared on separate lots.
With the handicap, you probably drop below the...
Yeah. So you can see, you can see what happens. So if you have your final plan, share with us.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can...
And then go to planning board for both.
Go to the planning board. But what I need to get from you today, if it's possible, is, so they don't get held up for another extra month, is the conditional use permit parking requires that we come to techno advisory committee first.
Requires a recommendation from Tac.
Right.
Just review the parking demand analysis.
So are you prepared to make a recommendation today?
It's a workshop. Can we, can we do that on a workshop?
You have before in the past.
We've reviewed, we've just said that the parking demand is acceptable or, you know, we agree to it.
Yeah. You've done it in the past for projects, but I don't know which one. I think one at Islington State or something.
We could say what you presented was acceptable. That's not what you're going to bring to the planning board, so.
Yeah, I could want to see the revised numbers, the final version, you know, using the sixth edition and the ITE rates.
Yeah. So we apply on the 17th. We don't go to Tac till April 2nd. Then we go to planning board. Deadline is April 30th and they get into the May meeting. Is that where, you know, that's why I'm just trying to move it along somehow, help them out.
I mean, we could possibly do it the same month if we know, I don't know that, what, when the meeting is in April for planning board. I think it's the 17th.
We have to have time to get the public hearing.
That's why merging the lots solves a lot of that, cuts that calendar down, but that's a...
Yeah, but the lots are owned by Bill, Joe and Ted.
Okay.
And Bill. It's not as easy waving a magic wand.
I thought they were, I thought they were same owner.
Single ownership.
Yeah.
Well, there need to be like a license or covenant to do that?
Yes. I mean, I think what you're saying is if there's going to be shared parking, there has to be some sort of a permanent arrangement between the lot owners.
Yeah.
And that's easier to do.
You could develop that document.
Lot owners are in agreement that they want to share parking. It makes sense. In fact, we're also looking at, you know, let's redo the whole thing. Not to belabor it, but we can get more parking if we redo the whole thing, but that has its costs and associated tidewells.
And store more treatment, which would be nice.
Right. So John's sort of working on that in a preliminary stage, right, with Chinburg?
Yep.
So we had discussed any sort of like plant building permit contingent on having everything finalized and compliant prior to our certificate of occupancy or, you know, closing out the plan, but I mean, being, getting delayed starting construction over there is, is going to be potentially detrimental to the project because they don't want to be opening, you know, they sort of are relying on opening in a season where they can really succeed, so.
Yeah. You just got to figure out how you want to go forward. We could try and get you on the same month at least if it's a conditional use permit. If you can avoid, if you have enough parking and you can avoid it, then you don't need it. The outdoor dining is the only thing that's going to be delayed. If you can make, if you can make the parking work, then outdoor dining would be the only thing you'd need the conditional use permit for and you can always add that on to your use later. I mean, it's not like you can't open without outdoor dining.
Right, and that might be a good option too, but...
But shared parking still needs a special exception, you said, right?
Right. If you, well, if you meet the parking and you're, you're sharing two lots, you can do a special exception.
Right.
If you don't meet the parking, then go to the planning board and you have a covenant that you record.
Yep. Okay. And you're saying if we were able to submit for Tac for April, which is Monday?
Deadline's Monday.
Yeah. Then you might consider allowing us to also submit for planning board before Tac meeting.
Yeah.
So we could...
Yeah, subject to Tac.
Do it in April.
Subject to Tac recommending it. You know, it doesn't have to recommend approval, it just has to review it.
Right.
It's not like it's a...
It's not a recommendation. It's a, you reviewed it.
It's a review, so...
Didn't you say you reviewed it today?
If you had it.
If you had it.
You don't have your...
I have it, but you're making comments, huh? Do you ever not make comments?
No. I know, I know. I get it, I get it. And this isn't subject to a full site review. We're only looking at...
No, well, just, no, just, just the parking.
Yeah, which is probably, probably the way you want to keep it considering emergency access is hideous.
Uh-huh.
How low boat?
What part of it isn't good, just so I know?
Emergency access.
Yeah, what part?
All of it.
All of it. Well, I don't know if I can do anything about the panhandle and the, and the panhandle to Islington.
That's the point I'm making, that it's going to be hard.
If you were to come in...
The 17th.
If you were to envision revising for, for discussion, you see how it's got the parking that's parallel to Islington Street right now?
Please?
Yeah, see those? If you were to envision coming in and having angled parking on a big loop, does that make? The emergency access, any better?
I have no idea.
No idea, okay. We'll run it by you before we do any more work.
Don't make it worse.
I don't think it make, I don't think it makes it worse because you kind of got...
But if you have to put a dumpster somewhere.
What's that?
Yeah, when you look at dumpster locations, think of that as well.
Don't make it worse. Yeah.
If you guys do decide to go with the covenant route, I would just start working on it as soon as you can with the other owners because likely it'll be a condition precedent to get that recorded, has to be reviewed by the legal department. So if you guys are in a time crunch, I'd, you gotta jump on that as soon as you can. If that's, if that's the route to go.
Do you have any more tidbits for us?
I think we're all set.
All right.
If you ever...
Anything else we need? All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your time. Later.
All right. Right on time. 3:02.
Perfect.
Thanks, Eric.
Good to be here.
A little jern for today.